The May 6 meeting of the Anarondale County Council is now back in session. For those of you who are used to tradition here, we had the prayer and pledge of allegiance earlier. We are moving on from recess. We have the Board of Ed budget, so we will just proceed with the meeting as continued. Ethics statement. Madam Secretary, could you please read the ethics statement?
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any other questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office Complex on Reva Road.
Great, thank you. Invitation, audience, we will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Marks will be limited to two minutes. Before we do that, I want to remind everyone that there are budget hearings, and that should not be a subject of today's invitation, audience. The budget hearings are on Thursday, May 9 at 7:00 PM in these chambers, and Monday, May 13, 7:00 PM at North County High School. Those are the appropriate time to address any budget concerns. At that point, is there anyone like to come forward for the invitation, audience? Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. And I think all of you know that already, even though you're new. Because if you leave it off the mailing address, I don't get the mail. And then I get in big trouble. But I'm back because I have a couple of things to ask about. You know, when you think about the Constitution, there's the preamble that says, "We, the people of the United States, you know, are forming this Constitution." And among the things that we're interested in protecting and forming is, you know, justice, equal justice. And so, then you look at, you know, how does this get divided up? And Article 1 is the executive branch, Article 2, as you guys, although in parallel, you know, your county level, but the legislative branch, and then you've got the judicial branch. And so, the question I received from one of you was, "Well, what do you think, basically, what do you think we can do about this?" And the answer is that all of you have run to help your constituents. You are providing services. That, you know, the First Amendment says the citizens have the right to petition the government for help. So if you've got a problem, who are you going to turn to? But, you know, you, I mean, certainly you do stuff yourself, but, you know, there are times when you need to petition the government. And so, that's why citizens like me come before you and say, "Please, help me." Because this is really, really tough. And I gave you some documents that I thought you would all understand are absolutely stunning from a legal point of view. Here's an attorney who asked the court to issue an order that I'm not allowed to call the police for help for people blocking my driveway, and much more serious things. And he ordered the Anarondale County Police Department...
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson.
He ordered the police department that they're not to do anything to help me. I think that's really wrong, and I was sure all of you would understand how this is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
So I'm asking for help.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Seeing no other movement in the crowd, we were going to close the invitation, audience. Again, reminder to everyone to try and attend the public hearings that are coming up. Notice of withdrawal, Mr. Volkey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. As noted on the agenda, I will be withdrawing Resolution 1619, given the timing. That is now moot, so I appreciate the administration working with the auditor to get that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Volkey. Approval of minutes. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of April 15, 2019.
I think we need the preliminary motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 19?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Point of order, don't we need the preliminary motion that a partial reading of the minutes constitutes...
Yes, it appears to be missing from your script.
(laugh) That's okay.
The partial reading.
Yeah, partial reading of the minutes. I want to say this, I'm missing it here. Hold on.
Mr. Chairman, I move that a partial reading of any motion constitutes the whole.
Thank you.
Or any bill, or resolution.
Yes, there we go. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Madam Secretary?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Madam Secretary, can you please read the minutes of April 15, 2019?
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Pruski at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Chairman Pruski, and the pledge of allegiance by Boy Scout Troop 414 Laurel, Boy Scout Troop 995 Arnold, and Boy Scout Troop 855 Severna Park.
Great. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 15, 2019?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. The minutes of April 15, 2019 stand approved as read. Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bill to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 4619, An Ordinance Concerning Special Community Benefit Districts' Cap on Tax Levy.
Great. Introduction. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 1919, Resolution Endorsing Financial Assistance from the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Authority and Fund to Paragon Bio Services, Inc.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to public hearing on bills. Bill Number 1419, as amended. Councilwoman Feeder is the sponsor. Will wait till the admin comes forward?
I should read it in.
Okay, go ahead.
Bill Number 1419, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Farm Breweries in Residential Districts.
Councilwoman Feeder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've discussed this bill at length in work session, but just to give a quick summary, this bill was introduced to create parity between farm wineries and farm breweries, further preserving our remaining agricultural and existing farm lands. The planning and zoning department would have a hand in the process. Article 17 and Article 18 of our county code requires adequate public facilities, and at a juncture in the planning process would require a community meeting between the land owner and the community. We have had in our code since 2003 the allowance for farm breweries in RA, since 2015 farm breweries in RA, yet we only have three farm wineries and zero farm breweries. So it is a particular farmer who's going to enter into this agriculture, agritourism venture, and for that reason, I hope my colleagues will support this bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman Feeder. Administration, any comments?
Good evening. Pete Barron with me at the table is Lori Rhodes, and Phil Hager from Office of Planning and Zoning. We have discussed this bill at length. The administration has expressed some concerns just around R1. However, we have nothing further to add on that issue. The administration wants to be very supportive of farm breweries, and I think we've made our point on R1 and happy to discuss further.
Great. Well, let's open this up for public hearing. I do have some folks who've signed up. The following people, please come forward. Mr. Bo Breeden, Mr. Stephen Harper, Ms. Joanna Hawley. Three folks that I had sign up. And if we can go in that order, Ms. Breeden, just want to get a chance, name and address in two minutes.
My name is Bo Breeden. I live at 1246 Mount Pleasant Drive in Cape St. Clair on the Broadneck Peninsula. I'm here to testify in support of Amendment Bill 1419 to allow for farm breweries in Anarondale County on properties owned RLD and R1 assessed as farm or agricultural property by the state of great, by the state on greater than 10 acres. I believe first and foremost that, given wineries are permitted in the county on such zone designations, parity should exist between farm-based wineries and breweries for simple economic viability of our family-owned local farmers as they look to remain viable for generations to come. I see this bill with amendments as sensible, restrictive in nature to ensure an overwhelming majority of properties and communities with this specific zoning will not be impacted by economic opportunities that provide small agriculture and farm operations to expand. With the county only identifying 19 such properties that may be eligible for future use, I believe the lot size requirements are adequate. Another restriction that has been placed on the bill is the property must produce at least one acre of land ingredients to include grain hops or other natural ingredients for the production of beer. Having been a witness to a good friend's business in Queenence County and Kent County on the development of farm-based wineries and distilleries and breweries, I can attest that land restrictions are just the first of a number of hurdles to get past the operating farm brewery, just based on federal and state laws that are very strict on operation, use, storage, and proper accounting method for taxation. Venturing into this business model is not for the undisciplined business owner, and operation within this industry often takes several years for permitting, construction, and six, if not seven-figure investments into businesses. The Superzinski family has lived on a farm since 1917, have operated the farm an entire time, feeding their family, but also providing locally fresh produce to the residents of Broadneck Peninsula at great prices. I support the local farmer, the local business owner, who wants to remain viable in the changing economic times, especially over the generations. I would like to see a parity of operational purposes with other similar business models like farm wineries, while understanding that zoning is the big discussion. Given GDP process, I don't believe the acceptance of conditional use included in this bill...
Please summarize.
Yep. I believe this is a great opportunity for local farmers to continue to have farms and not in other homes on their property in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Breeden. Mr. Harper?
Hi, my name is Steve Harper. I live at 508 Bay Hills Drive in Arnold. And my position is really very similar to Bo's. If you have wineries that are allowed on farms, why wouldn't you want to have breweries on farms? It's a small business. There's a farm in, right near my house, the Superzinski farm, that if you could preserve that land, and let's face it, the pressure would be really high to sell out to a developer at some point in the history. But if you have a, you know, a viable business on the property, then you can keep that farm. We can keep that land there. As a sailor, as a mountain biker, I spend all my time in nature, and having that little piece of greenery there and not losing it to somebody building a house or building a development at some point, because eventually, everything moves towards that. It's on a nice, it's on a nice road. It's not going to be a problem as far as that's concerned, at least in that area. I can't imagine that, you know, there's a big pressure for this. So it's not like you're going to have hundreds of breweries or anything. You're talking about a small change, but it's going to make a big difference to our neighborhood and our area of the county, because you're going to be able to keep this small farm over the period of time. So I just think it's also going to provide a place for people to gather that is nature-oriented, not a place that is in a shopping mall or on a strip mall. It's going to be, you know, something just, a little bit of history of Anarondale County preserved, because you've got a business that keeps it viable. So that's my two cents. Thank you. Ms. Hawley?
Good evening. My name is Jana Hawley. I'm with Grow and Fortify, 6247 Falls Road, Baltimore, Maryland. I'm also an Anarondale County resident, 1553 Ritchie Lane in Annapolis. Our organization represents on- and off-farm-based alcohol producers, including the wineries, distilleries, breweries, cideries, and meteries of Maryland. We know that some of the benefits of farm-based craft alcohol production include land preservation, economic sustainability, multi-generational continuance of family farms, their community gathering places, and they offer low-impact tourism. The county's agritourism law, which allows farms to undertake public-facing and value-added activities, was an important step forward. We know that the 10-acre farms in larger than R1 that could support a farm brewery have the right to sell into one-acre parcels, and we support the idea that keeping farms viable can help prevent this from happening as farmers age out and contemplate selling. Cost of Community Services Study, developed by American Farmland Trust and conducted nationally, consistently show that farmland and open spaces deliver large net gains to government finances, while residential developments are a net drain on government budgets. In Kent County, for example, for every dollar of revenue that residential land use generated, a dollar five was required in public services for county residents. But for every dollar that was generated by farm and open land, 42 cents was required for associated county services. These studies demonstrate that the ability to maintain positive working farms in every community and zone has a net positive benefit. We recommend the county, we commend the county for taking action, because across the board, Anarondale County's laws, regardless of zone, have not been perceived to be as supportive as they are in other jurisdictions. We urge the council's support of conditional use for R1 and RLD farm breweries, and to bring farm breweries to parity with county farm wineries. Additionally, I've been tasked with reporting that the Anarondale County Farm Bureau also supports Bill 14, as amended. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. Is there anyone else who did not sign up, which is a speak on 1419? Ms. Johnson? Ms. Flickston, Ms. Lynch, come on forward.
I'm sorry.
No, we could have come down to the dais. If everyone could sit, and then we'll just go in a row. Ms. Johnson, whenever you're ready, and we'll work our way down. Thank you.
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. As the old retired biology teacher, I think that it's, it used to be it wouldn't be necessary to say anything about the importance of farmland to biodiversity and stability of our environment and our, you know, the other creatures that live within our society. But the research recently shows that up to 85% of people do not go outside anymore. They don't know, you know, they don't know the most basics of biology. They don't know what's edible. They don't know what's poisonous. They don't share the joy of watching critters. You know, I spent hundreds of hours looking into the microscope and watching worms and, you know, algae and things swimming around in the water, and they are so cool. But we need them. They're not just cool. And, okay, some of them are ugly and slimy and stuff, but they're important biologically, and we're failing to teach that to people. So maybe if you can lure them to the farm, the brewery, they might see some other things about how wonderful and incredible the bio, you know, the living things on our planet are so interesting and so important to all of us. We had a council member, chairman, at one point, who kept saying, "On the farms, you learn. If you take care of the land, the land will take care of you." But people don't know anything about that anymore. We have kids who've never grown a tomato plant or anything else. And so, from the point of view of food, you understand that breweries, both wine and beer, were the ways of preserving food through the wintertime when there wasn't fresh food, because the alcohol preserved those things. So it's an important stability issue.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Lynch?
My name is Pat Lynch. My name is Pat Lynch from 1648 Homewood Road on the Broadneck Peninsula. I'm also an old retired biology and chemistry teacher. I also spent many years of my life working in corporate America, so I understand what profit and revenue means. I am president of the Broadneck Council, represents over 10,000 residents on the Broadneck Peninsula, but I'm speaking as a citizen tonight. There are several points that I feel still need clarity in this bill, so I'm speaking as an individual. And we'll return to my board with answers that they have asked you several questions. The impetus to this bill, 1419 text amendment, is a farm on the Broadneck Peninsula at a key intersection of Baydale Drive and College Parkway. We're concerned about traffic that will be attracted to this brewery in a highly-traffic roadway, parkway on the Broadneck. There are 12 three-day events that are allowed by the state law yearly, and if a brewery's business takes off, then there's a possibility of a brewery event on one day of the weekends, 36 weekends of the year, or a dozen three-day events. The map shows various traffic patterns and community locations representing all 19 of the subject properties that are subject to this land use change. The, to note, I am supportive of this land use change under strict conditions, as we want to help our farmers generate another source of revenue and protect their farm investment, but we also must protect the property owners adjacent to the farmers. These farmers, these farming businesses will benefit from the options presented in the We also, as, as has been mentioned earlier, want to prevent dense developments from our precious remaining farmlands. It's not clear if the text amendment passes, if the communities who are adjacent to the potential 10-acre-plus farm property will have an opportunity to hold or participate in a community meeting if they choose to protest the opening of a brewery business next to their properties. We're told by, we were just told today by the council that all meetings on this bill are closed.
Please summarize.
And that's not what I heard from the county council. Okay, there's, my last sentence. Breweries are subject to noise, traffic, odors, and pedestrian traffic, and we certainly want to protect our property owners.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. Ms. Flickston?
I'd like to give everyone those 10 copies of my testimony and also the brochure, because I'm not sure I've given my speech to all of you about the importance of Growth Action Network, so the brochure should help. I am Ann Flickston, Executive Director of Growth Action Network. Probably most of you've heard us called GAN. We're individuals, environmental organizations, and lots of community associations. Our focus is land use regulation, since we know what happens on the land impacts the air, the water, and our quality of life. This bill is of concern because it is zoning law change. R1 and RLD will be zoned countywide, or have this use allowed countywide. GAN has long been against spot or piecemeal rezoning that changes the underlying zoning on one parcel of land. But in spot zoning, there are administrative hearings, potential appeals, and lots of opportunity for the community to be heard. And that's when you're redoing, re-zoning one property. This will rezone at least 19, at least the uses will be different. And I would say if there were a way to make sure that the farm continued while the brewery continues, it's 55 acres, so there could still be an opportunity for a lot of houses over there, which would not help the farmers and be what we don't particularly want to see. And some people say this is just a text amendment. I would say it's a zoning change, and it really needs to be looked at. And I think putting it off till the general development plan to figure out where breweries make the most sense, and is it in R1, would be what we would ask the council to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flickston. Ms. Chaney?
Thank you. Hello. First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, and thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of farms and farming in Anarondale County. I live in Lothian, Maryland, on a farm, 160-acre farm, and I am also the chairperson for the Agriculture, Agritourism, and Farming Commission of Anarondale County. I serve as a board member for SMAC, Southern Maryland Agricultural Development Commission. Two quick points. First, I've attended a couple of meetings for the general development plan for Anarondale County, and it seems to be that an overriding, overwhelming request is that we have smart growth in Anarondale County. The second thing is to preserve farms and farmland. A farm is legal on all zoning districts in Anarondale County. We are looking for parity with the winery bill. We are looking for parity with the state of Maryland laws. So in supporting this bill, you are basically supporting what I see as the overwhelming request and desire of the citizens of Anarondale County, which is smart growth and preserving farmland. A farm is a business. It has always been legal on all zoning districts in Anarondale County, and a farm sells products, that produces and sells products. This is exactly what this bill supports. So I request that you all vote in favor of this bill. I think it is a fantastic opportunity for farms to have an opportunity to stay in farming, and the impact is extremely minimal to our neighborhoods, if not only beneficial. To have a small brewery in a neighborhood is a fantastic resource, where you can have a bucolic view while perhaps sipping on an ice cold beer. We know that the consumers today are requesting buy local, and that is what the farming demand is. In simple economics, we can allow our farmers to supply what our consumers are demanding. Our consumers are demanding to be able to buy their food and beverage locally, know their farmer, look them in the eye, have transparency, know what was grown, where it was grown, how it was produced, who produced it, and create a wonderful experience for many generations to come. Thank you so much. I request your support.
Thank you all to this panel. Appreciate you guys coming out. Seeing no more of the movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 1419, as amended, is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1419, as amended.
Bill Number 1419, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Farm Breweries in Residential Districts.
I don't see any discussion. I know there is a technical amendment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Shall I introduce my technical amendment?
Yep. Well, let me do a motion to adopt first. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One, or Number Three, my apologies.
Amendment Number Three. This technical amendment correctly identifies references that were renumbered or deleted by previous amendment.
Okay, and we need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, now Councilwoman Lacy.
It's a technical amendment. We deleted or repealed a couple of sections from the bill and from the existing law, so we need to renumber for clarity. That's all.
Okay. Any further discussion on this technical amendment, Number Three? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feeder?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment Number Three is adopted.
Due to the fact this is a technical amendment, we can't vote on this bill. Madam Secretary, could you please, unless there, I'm sorry, let me ask if there's any further discussion on this bill.
Oh.
Okay. Again, once it's, since it's a technical amendment, we can vote on the bill. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 1419, as amended.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feeder?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number 1419 is passed.
Okay, moving along. Bill 2219. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2219.
Bill Number 2219, An Ordinance Concerning Second Amendment to Lease Agreement of Certain County-Owned Properties to the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anarondale County, Incorporated.
Okay, we have the administration coming forward, Mr. Barron and the crew.
That's going to be my new band name. Evening. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the table is Skip Ball, the CEO of the library, Ms. Harris from Central Service, and Ms. Nieder from Office of Law. We discussed this bill at the work session. Bill 2219, the Anarondale County current lease with the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anarondale County. We're requesting that we amend it to include emergency management cooling and warming stations within the library during extreme weather events. The Office of Emergency Management has requested that change. This bill also allows for the library foundation to serve alcoholic beverages during fundraisers after regular, after regular operating hours on library property, which is currently not permitted. It allows libraries to host farm market events, such as the one at the Deale Library during the past year or two. At those events, attendees may purchase beer and wine from vendors. It does require that the library and its vendors obtain all necessary license and permits. One thing to note, this does not allow political events, political fundraising events, and if the council approves this, the real estate division will move forward with lease changes. With that, the folks at the table may have something to add, but we, the administration asks you move favorably on this bill.
Madam Auditor, I know you wanted to provide an update for the benefit of the public.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Library wanted us to know that at the farmers' markets, they do allow tasting of alcoholic beverages, not consumption, not like direct drink, but to taste.
Correct. Councilwoman Hare?
Just a quick question. Is there any additional sort of liability that the county takes on with this, from a legal standpoint?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't think we, that wasn't an issue that we researched heavily. I think we, I don't know, Samantha, if you...
I agree. It's not something that we researched heavily, but with the permits and making sure that we're doing things correctly and being insured, I think we're covered. Okay.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, but we are self-insured, right? I mean, the county's self-insured, so it's not like there's some insurance policy that's going to pay out if something happens, so it kind of comes down to a risk management issue, is what it sounds like. Okay.
Okay, seeing no other further council questions, let's open this up for public hearing. If there's anyone like to come forward to speak on 2219, please do so. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 2219 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2219.
Bill Number 2219, An Ordinance Concerning Second Amendment to Lease Agreement of Certain County-Owned Properties to the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anarondale County, Incorporated.
Okay, I see there's no discussion, so we will move forward. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 2219.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feidler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 2219 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2319.
Bill Number 2319, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works Heritage Harbor Condominium Phases 1 through 10 Water and Wastewater Petition Front Foot Benefit Assessment.
Okay, we'll wait till everybody takes a seat, and Mr. Barron, whenever you're ready after that.
Sure, thank you. Pete Barron, for the record, with the county executive's office. Heritage Harbor Six Coves has petitioned the county to take over its water and sewer. This is 106 owners in, 106 unit owners in 53 duplex-style homes. Unit owners now pay an equal proportionate share per unit for the maintenance of the common grounds, roads, and other nonutility infrastructure. Currently, water and sewer petition projects have, the only option in code is to do an assessment based on the front foot of the property. This leads to varying payments, despite each unit or each lot would receive the same benefit. So this is inconsistent with the condominium group's current equal pay practice. Seventy-three of the 106 property owners, or 68.87%, voted favorably to connect to water, to public water and sewer, and that they be assessed at a per-property basis. There's no cost, the county gets fully reimbursed for all charges, regardless of the assessment method. So this is the unit owner's request that we charge them equally. There is a small amendment that we will offer at the appropriate time. There was a, and I'll happy to discuss it at the appropriate time, but it's, seems like a small amendment, but it's not a technical amendment.
Madam Auditor, did you want to add anything? I know we had a discussion earlier, are you okay?
So I just want to bring to your attention that to take someone on, to take it over, it has to be self-supporting. So when we did, when they sent out the ballots to be self-supporting, they used estimates as of the fiscal, after the fiscal year 19 budget, but as of November, December, whatever that timeframe was. We've since got the fiscal year '20 budget, and that information is in here, where they've raised the cost of one and lowered the cost of another. It's okay to lower the cost, and then they bill based on the actual cost. If it comes in lower, if it's higher, they would normally need to go out and re-get agreements to make sure it's still self-sustaining. So that's what I had in here. I've since talked to, well, emailed Chris Phipps, Department of Public Works, and he is saying that they think they can do it for the million three that was in the ballot, because there is some efficiencies of doing the water and the sewer at the same time. So basically, that's kind of where it stands. If we do go by the ballots, I will be proposing a cut to the fiscal year '20 budget, so.
Okay. Any questions based upon that? Okay, well, let's open this up for public hearing. Anyone like to come forward in regards to 2319? Okay. Let's see, 2319, we have Mr. Zolin and Ms. Ewing. Name and address, and then two minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and council members. My name is John Zolin. I live at 2546 North Haven Cove. I am a unit owner of Heritage Harbor Condominium, Inc. I'm speaking on behalf of the Heritage Harbor Condom, Inc. Board of Directors and recommending approval of Bill 2319. The administration has already told you about how we share costs evenly within the 106 units. I will not go back and repeat that. For that reason, we are recommending approval of Bill 2319. I understand the amendment reduces our costs by $1. We are in favor of that. If you would like to reduce the cost further, Public Works, I'll bring a whole lot of people come, and we will approve that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Miss Ewing.
I'll be brief. Jessica Ewing, 2417 Fox Creek Lane, Davidsonville. I'm the community manager for Heritage Harbor, and on behalf of the board, we do ask that you support it so that it is uniform. There are a lot of unit owners there who are on fixed incomes, and if they have a larger front foot than their roof neighbors, is what we call them, it could have an astronomical impact on their finances.
Thank you all. You're dismissed.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, did you want to speak on this bill? If there's anyone else that'd like to come forward to speak?
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I have some questions, because, you know, when builders come in, they pay an impact fee. And the impact fee goes to funding the sewer, you know, the sewage processing plants, you know, building the pipe, you know, laying the pipe systems and the pumping stations and all of these sorts of things, which are very, very expensive of activities or projects. And they're more complicated than I really understand. I've looked at it more maybe than the average guy, but I don't know much more than the average guy, which is pretty close to zero in my case. But I have concerns about, if a person wants to know, what do you do to make the information available so that we can understand? Well, if you're going to be discharging sewage, how much does that really cost the rest of the society to subsidize that cost of building that sewage plant and operating that sewage plant? And maybe it's nothing, but I don't think so, because I know for sure that historically the impact fees have been very small relative to the real costs. So I guess what I'm asking you to do is, for people who want to understand how this works, it would be helpful if somebody could put together something that's pretty simple or, you know, something that's clear enough that the average person could understand. When you're asking to add sewage treatment and water, you know, services, what does it really cost, you know, the whole community? And then how much, out of the total cost, how much are the residents or the property owners actually picking up? Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Seeing no other movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 2319 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2319.
Bill Number 2319, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works Heritage Harbor Condominium Phases 1 through 10 Water and Wastewater Petition Front Foot Benefit.
Okay, seeing no discussion, there is an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment corrects an error in the amount of the maximum front foot benefit assessment for the water portion of the project.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this amendment, of course?
Nothing to add, as I, Pete Barron, for the record, and I apologize, I didn't introduce the folks at the table with me before, so let me fix that error with me. From DPW is Karen Henry, from Law, Kelly Kenny, and from DPW, Ron Briggerman.
Did I get that right, sir?
Good. So just very quickly, there was an error that Madam Auditor caught in the dollar amount. This changes the amount by $1. While it does seem small, it is not technical.
Okay. Councilwoman Lacy?
Oh, I think it's, actually, it's like a total of $106. I think that's all I really wanted to point out. Yes, it's a dollar.
Correct. It's a $1 per unit.
Yes.
Madam Auditor?
I just wanted to explain, the 1584 is what the owners actually approved, so that's why the change was. Okay.
Okay, seeing no more lights, further discussion. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number One?
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feidler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Okay, this is not a technical amendment. Bill Number 2319, as amended, will be heard at the next meeting, Monday, May 20. Okay, moving forward. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2419.
Bill Number 2419, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel and Purchasing Employee and Retiree Health Benefits Program.
Okay, while we're waiting for a large group, and probably another table, I just want to take a moment, as a point of personal privilege, Ms. Schewitt has been announced as our new county attorney, and I didn't get a chance earlier to announce, because she was working on a amendment for this bill, but I just want to welcome her to the council. Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you. Just like, and some folks will realize this, as the chairman, things change very quickly, so you have to be on your toes, but we welcome you to Anaronda County as far as our representative for council. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Barron?
Evening. Peter Barron with the county executive's office. With me at the table is Greg Swain and Hamilton Tyler from Office of Law, our new personnel director, Ms. Dickerson, and Ann Bedowski from Personnel. Also within earshot are a number of other smart people who may come up. So the purpose of 2419 is to revise certain provisions of the code related to county employee and retiree health benefits program and address some concerns raised by union representatives. In 2014, the county council approved and enacted Bill Number 8513, which revised many aspects of the county employee health benefits program. As we discussed in the work session, this led to some litigation, and especially around whether the right to collectively bargain includes bargaining on health care. Ultimately, the appellate court held that the right to collectively bargain included health benefits, and sent the case back to circuit court. Bill 2419 is the result of extensive discussion between Union Council, the Office of Law, to implement the court's ruling. If passed, 2419 will resolve the lawsuit and allow circuit court, the circuit court litigation to be dismissed. I want to turn it over to Mr. Swain to walk through the technical parts of the bill, and anybody else at the table who is here to help answer questions that may come up. Thank you.
Good evening. Greg Swain, county attorney. As Mr. Barron says, the principal purpose of Bill 2419 is to affirm the right of collective bargaining regarding health care. And that was, as Mr. Barron said, there was litigation filed in relation to Bill 8513, not because the focus of Bill 8513 was to attack collective bargaining rights, but because there was a provision in the bill that simply said, health care is not subject to collective bargaining. So Bill 2419 is intended to cure that problem and provide that health care components of the health care plan are subject to collective bargaining. Now, as far as the, what components of health care, the bill does not define that, because the courts have not defined that. And basically, what the courts have said is there is a balance you have to set when you're determining what is subject to collective bargaining and what is not. So the bill preserves the right to collective bargaining, but does not attempt to define every nuance that would be subject to collective bargaining. It also provides specifically for binding arbitration for certain aspects of that, of the analysis and of the selection of health care benefits. And that is, that is basically it. There is, the one thing the bill does talk about, as far as retirees go, is retirees are not subject to collective bargaining. However, there are certain rights regarding retirees, specifically the employer subsidy that retirees would pay after retirement. So you'll be seeing an amendment that verifies that the current practice will continue, and that meaning when you retire, whatever your subsidy is at the time of retirement, will continue through your retirement. And that is basically it. And we are happy to address any questions. Hamilton Tyler is here, and he is the attorney who's handled litigation. He's been involved in this for five years, or probably more than five years, as well as our new director of the Office of Personnel, Sherry Dickerson, and Ann Bedowski, who worked extensively with the Office of Law during our negotiations with the union attorneys on Bill 2419. And I do want to emphasize that this bill is a collective effort. We had many meetings with Attorney Joel Smith, who is here, with his client, Obie Atkinson, who is the head of the Fraternal Order of Police Union. We went through many, many drafts of this bill. We are, we think it's a good product. We think we have done what the Court of Special Appeals directed us to do. We think it avoids further disagreement with the union, who is and are our employees, and we want to be cooperative with them. We think the bill properly sets the boundaries, and we think it's a good bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no lights, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Swain, you just said this bill sets the boundaries. As I read this bill, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like literally everything is on the table with respect to health care and what can be bargained for. It doesn't look like there are actually any boundaries. If I'm reading that wrong, tell me, but that's what I'm seeing.
Well, there are boundaries. And what the bill, as I've said, the, this area of law is something that you won't find a lot of direction on. There is no statute that controls, there's no particular case that controls. So what we have provided in the bill, and it's on page three, the very top, paragraph B2, is that the health insurance benefits plan is bargainable to the extent provided by federal, state, and county laws, including our charter. So we do not set firm limits, but we do provide that we will recognize collective bargaining rights to the extent required by federal and state law.
And so what are those limits?
Well, it depends on what provision that you were talking about.
Okay, so...
And I will say this, as far as collective bargaining goes, while we have not formally recognized collective bargaining with regard to health insurance, the practice has always been to include the unions in discussions when we formulate new plans. So the current plan that the Office of Personnel has, it's a four-year contract. What this bill provides is, for the 18-month period preceding the renewal of that contract, the unions get a say, and that is bargainable. One of the things that we avoided by going through with litigation is the possibility that we would be forced to bargain health care every year for the annual unions and every other year for the unions with two-year contracts, which would, which would have a major fiscal impact based on the advice we receive from the Budget Office, because we get a lot of cost savings in our multi-year plans.
Okay. I'm going to switch gears for a second, and this might be a question for Mr. Tyler to ask. What's sort of the best case, worst case if we go to court? So if we go to court, what are the odds that we're going to wind up with a circuit court decision that's substantially the same as this bill, which has a $2.6 million cost to the county, versus coming out and the county being on the hook for less money? What's sort of the cost-benefit analysis that obviously Office of Law has had to perform to be able to figure out this is a good bill and to bring it in front of the council?
Well, there never was a $2.6 million savings, because this bill was, the lowest-cost plan was never implemented. The Court of Special Appeals ruled, there was an injunction preventing the county from implementing the lowest-cost plan rule, and then subsequently, the Court of Special Appeals ruled that the provision as written was unlawful. And that's when it got sent back to the circuit court. The concern with going back to the circuit court is that we litigate, that the circuit court fashioned some type of ruling piecemeal and rules specifically on different aspects of health care, and it's really difficult to determine where that would end up.
Do you all have any projections on that?
Well, what the Court of Special Appeals rather amorphously said in terms of what's bargainable, what's not, is there's a sliding scale, and on one, on one side of the scale is the interest of the employees, and on the other side of the scale is management prerogative. And where on that scale each particular benefit might fall is what the circuit court was going to determine.
Right.
And so we think that what's, what's been drafted now strikes a really, a good equality between what we want to do and in terms of health care procurement, and it allows the unions to weigh in on that before we purchase the plan, before the plans go out for RFP, actually. And that's the time to do it, because the concern with going to circuit court is, there's a ruling, and then we're forced to bargain every year. a ruling, and then we're forced to bargain every year. And that would get extremely expensive, because if you've got to go out every year on RFP, the prices are going to, Personnel can speak to this more than I can, but the price is going to be sky-high. So we thought that this was a good resolution for all of us, and probably as best as the county was going to do, even in litigation.
Okay. And in the event that the unions and the county try to negotiate this and they're unable to reach an agreement, at that point, the union has the ability to take it to binding arbitration, and in that event, if the arbiter sides with the unions, then they will come back to this body and say, you've got to fund that at that point, and it'll come back to the taxpayers. So I guess I'm struggling to understand the difference between going to court and having the court impose that versus us agreeing to that, which is effectively, the way I'm viewing it, almost the same result. You know, you're going to have some outside body at some point potentially tell this council, hey, you've got to fund healthcare at this higher level than maybe the county wanted to do. Whether that person is a circuit court judge after you've had a trial and you've had a chance to offer your argument, or it's after arbitration, again, where you have that same opportunity, it still seems like it's a distinction without a difference. So again, if I'm missing something, please fill me in, but that's the way I'm viewing this.
It seems like during our discussions with the unions, and when, as Mr. Swain mentioned, we had extensive negotiations and discussions, and we all pretty much agreed, we have great healthcare as a county. And the union really doesn't, doesn't have, my understanding is, they don't have complaints about our healthcare. So I don't think there are going to be issues related to when we, when we have that bargaining before the RFP. What the union objected to was being told that we're not going to negotiate anything except price, and that was the problem they had.
And let me add one thing about the 2.7 million. We've heard it mentioned a number of times. That 2.7 million was a projection of the implementation of the lowest-cost plan. So that 2.7 million was never realized, and that was something that the court stopped by injunction. So that's one point, that 2.7 million never occurred and never would occur. And secondly, as to the cost, the biggest risk we saw in going to court is that we'd have to bargain every year on healthcare. Now, the Budget Office told us that was going to increase our costs 30 to 40 percent. That would be catastrophic in a way to our healthcare plan. So we, that was one of our, one of our points was to avoid that possibility.
You're saying in your worst-case scenario, if the court said, hey, you have to negotiate on this every single year, then that's going to skyrocket your costs. But I'm assuming there's also a possibility the circuit court could say they're not going to force the county to go and put out RFPs every single year.
Well, this, we don't know what the circuit court would do.
Right, exactly. And I guess that's what I'm kind of getting at, is, I made this point during the work session, I'll make it again. You know, I do this where I have to do cost-benefit analysis with clients all the time on what's it worth to go to court versus what's it worth to settle? And I really feel like we are, again, being hamstrung, in a sense, by the lack of information from anyone to tell us what is really the cost-benefit analysis of to go to court versus to not go to court. And I feel like that information is just not being presented, and I find it extremely difficult for us as the quote-unquote "client" to be able to make a decision as to whether this works for the county and the taxpayers that we represent. I just don't feel like we have that information. I mean, I've asked repeatedly the question of, what is this going to cost if we're implementing this, and that's gotten into the crystal ball discussion, which has become a new term up here. So I guess that's where I'm struggling, is I just am kind of unclear on what the costs are for the county, one way or the other. And I hear this 30 percent number, that's the first time I've heard that, and that's helpful, I think, to the analysis, but any more insight you can offer would be greatly appreciated.
Well, I can say this, that as far as the cost-benefit analysis, you know, I've mentioned the 30 percent, and that is a very real figure. Now, and we do know that the one thing the Court of Special Appeals directive was crystal clear about is healthcare is subject to collective bargaining.
I agree with that.
And that is the point of the bill. So we are not going to be able to change that, and whatever cost is inherent in that will be costs we will have to bear. So with that as our starting point, we looked at, can we do better than putting this on a judge who could do anything with this? And we think we have done better. We think we've done better because we've eliminated the risk of single-year plans, and both the Office of Personnel and the Office of Budget will tell you how, how difficult that would be to implement. We have limited in the right to binding arbitration to certain items rather than everything in the bill, and that's on, if you look at page six of the bill, I believe it's page six. Paragraph Q, so there are certain items that are subject to binding arbitration. As I've said, we don't anticipate that there's going to be a big change, because the practice of the Office of Personnel has been to include the unions in these discussions anyway, even though they didn't, at that time, believe that they had a weighted seat at the table. So now they will. We expect that it will proceed as it has in the past, frankly. You know, we don't know. I don't have a crystal ball either. But those are, those are the factors we looked at in taking this case back to circuit court.
Okay.
And also that our annual healthcare costs are roughly $80 million. $80 million, so if you're talking 20 or 30 percent of that increase...
Big number.
That's between $16 million and $24 million. And those are huge numbers compared to, to what we're paying, and we think those numbers are far dwarf any, anything we'll lose in the collective bargaining process, which, as Mr. Swain indicated, I don't think we're going to lose anything.
To what degree does this take some of the bargaining units? Let me, let me preface with this. My understanding is that the FOP has effectively the most generous sort of realm of things that they can bargain for, whereas the other bargaining units have slightly smaller options that are on the table. And again, if I'm wrong on that, correct me. To what degree does this sort of change what everyone has? It sounds like, in a lot of ways, the FOP is going to stay up here and everybody else is coming up to them. Is that what's happening?
Well, the bill does provide that the collective bargaining results will be applied equally to all the unions.
Sure.
All the employees, actually. So as far as what all the various, we have 12 separate unions. I'm familiar with this one because of this case. I was not involved in the collective bargaining process. The Office of Personnel may be able to speak more to that than I am. But, but the, you know, the intent of the bill is to treat everyone fairly, including the union members.
And not to belittle that, and I don't want to belittle that at all, but what is the cost of that? What is the cost to the county of that difference right there?
Everyone's always been given the same healthcare.
Okay.
All the unions, all the non-reps, everyone's always had the same.
Across the board.
Across the board.
So it sounds like you're almost saying that this is going to have a net zero effect on the county in terms of cost?
That's possible. There could be no change.
Okay. And to what degree can you all say that with certainty?
I can't say that with certainty. Again, I do not have that crystal ball.
We're going out, they're going out on RFP eventually, maybe in a year or two, and there's probably going to be some healthcare increase because healthcare costs are going up. To what, which part of that's attributable to this bill? That's very difficult to say, if any.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
There were a couple of lights went on, so I'm going to try and go in order, as I saw them. Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mostly wanted to respond to my colleague, who seems to think that, in general, we should weigh all risks as if they were equal and could all be equally measured with dollars when they can't, for a number of factors. One is, you're not accounting for the time that has gone into crafting this kind of solution, and philosophically, we ought to be able to legislate our way to a solution that is better for the collective whole, rather than leaving that up to a circuit court judge or the Court of Special Appeals or the Court of Appeals to decide, period. So I don't, I really don't understand your concern, not that I want to invite you to speak anymore about it at this very moment, okay?
Is that emotion?
But I merely, I merely make the point that in my particular legal experience, the more you've got a complex issue at, at the table, the more likely I'm going to be to advise my client to come to a settlement agreement, so that the parties can contain, can retain control over the terms of the agreement. And I think this is exactly what this is. Costs, prognostications and crystal balls aside, they're really not necessary, because this is about self-government, and that's what this bill does. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so walk me through, I think I just heard you say, in two years or so, we'll go out to RFP. So, starting in six months from now, assuming this bill passes, you would begin discussions with the unions about the healthcare provisions. Is that right?
18 months prior, correct.
Okay, okay. What aspects of the healthcare would be subject to bargaining and what wouldn't be subject to bargaining in those discussions?
Well, I think, my anticipation is that the discussions will proceed much as they have in years past.
Which is?
As, well, which is, I'd have to defer to Personnel on that, but certainly a discussion of what kind of health plans we're looking at, what's out there, what's available, what benefits they would cover. You know, the intent being that these things will be, by agreement, not necessarily adversarial type agreement, but by agreement. And there are some parameters that are yet to be decided, and that's, and that's just a statement.
Could you give me an example of some of the ones that have yet to be decided?
Well, I mean, it depends on what someone brings up. If someone, for instance, if the union says, well, we want a plan that covers people in California 50 percent off, something like that, obviously, you started getting into things that just become sort of outlandish, and I don't anticipate that happening in these cases.
Okay, but so if I think about healthcare just in general, deductibles, would those be subject?
They are.
Ann Bedowski, Assistant Personnel Officer, yes. Copays, out-of-pocket deductibles, out-of-pocket maximums, those would be things that would be up for discussion.
Okay.
They all exist currently in the plan, so any plan design change could be discussed. Again, I think that would be part of the negotiation back and forth.
Okay.
Give and take.
Specific providers, is that something that's on the table or not, or do we know?
Well, we have three different plans right now we offer, and all, and those plans are kind of, they're all sort of crafted differently. And let me defer to Ms. Dickerson.
Sherry Dickerson. So obviously, I can't speak to history here at Anorondal County, but what I can say is that plan design would be a huge part of the discussion. Providers specifically would be a matter of the RFP and the respondents that we get back from that RFP. So they wouldn't be able to pick the, the actual providers, not just, you know, randomly. There will be a process in place, and they can be a part of that team of reviewers when we do the RFP, yes, certainly.
Okay. So if I understand correctly, almost anything is on the table except specifically the providers that respond to the RFP, they're limited to whoever responds, and the time, the sort of every six years, every four years, how often you go out to bid? Is that a fair characterization? Am I understanding this correctly?
Well, I think the big picture is, right now, the county is committed to providing healthcare insurance. So that's number one.
Sure.
Number two, I think, as far as big picture, that's probably accurate. Again, I'll defer to Ms. Dickerson.
I just want to make sure I've got my head wrapped around it, that's all.
And I, I think with all candor, this is something that we will all be working through in the next six months. You know, the, I think, from my perspective, affordability is a big factor, and that would be spread between the county and the employee. So, you know, if the, the group comes up with some elaborate plan that just is cost-prohibitive, then we are back to the frontboard. And so, you know, I, I think this is something that we're just going to have to work through as we move forward in the next six months.
Okay, and if, if the group comes up with a plan that's cost-prohibitive, in that instance, it would go to binding arbitration?
I think that, I think that would be something that we would be able to resolve, because if it's cost-prohibitive to everybody, then nobody wins. I mean...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Thiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to give this crystal ball one more shake. So there were two, there was a mention of sky-high and astronomical. Looking at the fiscal impact, the county's liability would be approximately $2.6 million annually. Would sky-high and astronomical be over $2.6 million?
Yeah, the $2.6 million, I think you're referring to is the, is that projection for the lowest-cost plan, which is something that the court struck. So what we heard from the Budget Office, if we had to negotiate every year for healthcare is, and this was no detailed analysis they did, but they said 30 to 40 percent annually. So we have an $80 million cost, and you take 30 percent of that, and that's a substantial cost. And, you know, both this question and Councilwoman Hare's question, the costs are borne by the employees. So the employees, whether it's union or not, are not going to be advocating for a plan that's going to cost them $600 or $700 a month. Everyone wants affordable care, everybody wants a great plan, and that's what the county's been able to provide through the years. We don't anticipate this being any different. And as far as costs go, the 2.6, 2.7 million, there's really not a factor in this, but we are, you know, as far as a worst-case scenario, if we did have to bargain every year, that's the estimate that we're getting from the Budget Office, who deals with this every year.
Okay, and this is a beast of a bill for five months in, so I appreciate your willingness to answer all of our questions.
Councilman Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple follow-ups. Is the employer subsidy going to be part of the collective bargaining ability when this bill is passed?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So your point about the unions aren't necessarily going to want a $600 or $700 cost to them, I understand that, that makes sense. But what they could, I assume, do is come in and say, this would be $600 or $700 to us, but we want a bigger employer subsidy from the county, greater than the current, I think 85 percent, something like that, they could ask for more than that, is that right?
Well, I think that would be bargainable.
So that would be a piece of it?
Yeah, it's always been, the subsidy's always been bargainable.
Okay. And good, that's, that's kind of my next question, is to what degree, or to what components, to what degree are the components of healthcare currently subject to collective bargaining and binding arbitration today, vis-à-vis what we're going to do with this bill?
Employer subsidy at this point is the one thing I know that has been out there for bargaining.
That's the only piece of it?
Been here for three years, is that, to my short tenure, yes.
I'll only hold you to the last three years, then.
Okay. And it's been consistent for three years I've been here at the 8515 for two or three plans.
Okay, so then if I understand correctly, we're going to go from employer subsidy being the only thing that is subject to collective bargaining and/or binding arbitration, and we're now going to include deductibles, plan structure, out-of-pockets, potential providers, so we're putting all these things on the table and saying, they're now subject to collective bargaining and binding arbitration. That's what it sounds like the bill's doing.
So the plan design, unless we're going to go out for an RFP every year, that will only be negotiated once.
For the four-year term.
Correct.
Then you'll come back, you'll look at it again. But if the union doesn't like that, they could say, we're going to take this to collective bargain, or we're going to take it to binding arbitration and see what happens.
In theory, yes.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Hare?
I'm sorry, I forgot, one more question. On page three, down towards the bottom, paragraph three, I apologize, I'm just not quite sure I understand what the paragraph is saying. So the county has discretion each year to make changes, subject to collective bargaining if the county council approves them at least 60 days before the plan year? Is there something specific that was in mind when drafting this provision?
So currently, at the end, in June or so, we bring forward a resolution for the rates for the next calendar year, and that is a resolution that is passed by the council. So we present those rates to you, and you approve them to go in for the 20, well, the next calendar year, and that's what that's referring to.
And those rates would be, that's the employer subsidy and the employer piece?
It's the employer subsidy, so you see the total cost per plan for each of the tiers of each plan.
So that employer subsidy, then, would still be able to be bargained for every year, if I understand that correctly? Like he was, that's what he was getting at?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's helpful.
Councilwoman Pickard?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you to everybody who's worked on this bill. I think it's important as we move forward. This evening, I think there might be some amendments, but to realize that we're currently in a court case situation with our own employees, so from a, that just doesn't feel great. So I think, hopefully, coming to the, a good outcome tonight or the near future is in the best interest of everyone in the county. So thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thank you. I think we want to hear from the public as well, so we're going to now move to public hearing remarks. I do have some folks that signed up. If you would come forward, please, Mr. Tom Wright, Mr. O'Brien Atkinson. As you come forward, your name and address in two minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Persky and members of the county council.
Yeah, Mr. Wright, Mr. Atkinson, you don't need to be at the table for now. And then the other two, you guys come up where I asked her. That's how we do it, that's okay, just stand right behind there. I'll get in trouble with that, Secretary. That's all right. That's, that's okay. Mr. Wright and maybe you.
Okay. Good evening, Chairman Persky and members of the council. My name is Tom Wright, 101 North Crane Highway, Glenburn, Maryland. I'm a member of local 582 Executive Board, and we are in support of Bill 2419. This bill allows, allows union member representatives to bargain in good faith with Anaronda County government in regard to employer subsidies and components of our healthcare, health insurance plans. Just as importantly as this bill allows for transparency and cooperation in regard to annual claims, disbursements, costs, containment, and claim provider data upon request. In order to contain future costs and ensure an efficient and fair healthcare plan, employees and county government must share information and ideas, and this bill allows for that. We would like to thank the county executive Pittman for his commitment to transparency and fair negotiating practices, and also the members of this council for all your time and effort on this very important issue. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Persky, council members and staff. My name is O'Brien Atkinson, 1311 Generals Highway, Crownsville. I appear tonight in dual roles as president of our FOP Lodge and as the chairman of our Anaronda County Employee Healthcare Coalition. I've been chairman of that coalition since 2005. Prior to that, I was chairman of the Coalition for Binding Arbitration since 2002. And since 2014, I've served as trustee for the Anaronda County Retiree Healthcare Trust, which was formed as a result of 8513. Each of these positions that I've held were the result of elections by my fellow union leaders to serve, represent, and protect our collective interests. We've always negotiated over healthcare benefits. That's a position that we have come to disagreement with the administrations over the years, who have said, no, we have not. Well, we've got documentation, we've, we've always negotiated over healthcare benefits, and healthcare benefits are a negotiable item. 8513 put an end to that, but the Court of Special Appeals overruled 8513, as you know. As a result of my positions, I was lead union plaintiff in Atkinson versus Anaronda County, where we retained our right to binding arbitration after John Leopold attempted to take that from us. I was also the union, lead union plaintiff in Atkinson II versus Anaronda County, which is the reason we're here today, which was also brought forward by John Leopold and litigated under the Schu administration. As we know, that case was decided by the Maryland Court of Special Appeals and led us here to you today. There's a few things that have come up as a result of, of this legislation. One is that we've agreed to a uniform process of collective bargaining for all unions. That means the 12 bargaining groups, the greatest fear of the county was that our 12 bargaining groups were going to have 12 different provisions and 12 different healthcare plans, as, as more and more of us have binding arbitration. And we, as a concession, we have decided to negotiate together.
Thank you. Can you summarize, I'll let you finish.
Thank you. The Bill 2419 consolidates our health benefits under one umbrella, and experts tell us that consolidation and uniform benefits saves the county money. Bill 29, or 2419 also provides for problem solving, all working to the same end. Information will be shared, plan experience and administration, rates will be discussed before they are published, which will alleviate costly mistakes, and we're looking forward to your support on this legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Mr. Volkey.
I just have one question, Mr. Chair. Mr. Atkinson, question for you. 8513 was Mr. Benoit's bill, wasn't it?
That was, he was the sponsor.
Lead sponsor, okay, that's what I thought, thank you.
Thank you all. Anyone who did not sign up that wishes to come and speak, come forward. As you're sitting down, I know Madam Secretary will give you a sheet to sign, but have your name and state your name and address for the record, two minutes. Ms. Johnson, if you would like to begin, and then we can work our way across.
Julie Johnson, P.O., about 6634, Annapolis. As just an ordinary citizen, I would like to, to thank everybody for working on this bill. I am committed to the importance of having employees have a decent standard of living. One of the great crises of your, you know, the next decades are with this huge gap in, you know, with income inequality and quality of life, and having a sustainable employment and a sustainable way of life. And healthcare is really high up in that priority. So I thank all of you for supporting and working hard to come to something that protects the people who protect us and support us and run our government. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, my name is Joel Smith. I have the privilege of representing the coalition of unions that have brought this piece of litigation. I'm responsible personally both for Atkinson I and Atkinson II. I was involved in working to develop the interest arbitration charter provision in the first place, worked on the Bill 0301 back in 2003, when we first passed the enabling legislation at the code level, and also been involved in the various processes in terms of implementing. I can address many of the questions that have been asked by council today, because I've been personally involved in collective bargaining and representing particularly the firefighters since 1992 within the county. I can represent to you that, in my experience, even before binding arbitration was passed, we did bargain over facets of, of healthcare, including co-pays and different kinds of features of healthcare, whether different benefits would be available or not, and the cost of the county. We even had impasse, non-binding impasses, that were litigated and determined prior to interest arbitration. What we're seeking here today is to solve a piece of large litigation that has been pending for five years. We've engaged in collaborative decision-making, collaborative problem-solving, to put together a plan that will enable a process for the parties to reach mutually solutions in terms of defining healthcare. I do, my, my practice is limited to collective bargaining. I'm at the table day in and day out talking about healthcare. Healthcare is one of the most difficult issues, one of the most complicated issues, that an employer and a group of employees can confront. But it is also important to do it on a universal.
Please summarize, Mr. Smith.
Sure. It's also important to do it on a universal level. What we've offered you in this piece of legislation is a uniform, consistent system that will apply the same outcome to all bargaining units, and have it in a way that can be planned and can be done in a collaborative way.
Thank you.
And I submit myself to be available to any questions that you've had. I know you've had many questions over the period of time, and I'll be happy to answer, or try to answer.
Mr. Volkey. Councilman Volkey.
Do we want to, I can hold, but I do have questions for Mr. Smith when the panel's done. Is it now the right time?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Mr. Smith, thank you, and I appreciate you being willing to answer questions. I think you may be the most experienced person on all of this in the room, so.
Well.
I guess, what I'm hearing you say is that this has always been something that has been part of the discussion, not necessarily part of the collective bargaining or the binding arbitration process, but it's always been part of the discussion, and there's been some degree of management prerogative, but this has always been on the table in, in negotiations.
I can think of no more important issue.
Okay.
Other than wages to an employee.
Sure.
Because what an employee seeks in, in our political system to get out of employment is both wages and a healthcare system to help the employee and the employee's family.
But if, and so this is kind of my next question, if, this is something that's always been done up to this point, informally, without the requirement of codification of collective bargaining and then the subsequent binding arbitration provision, why is it that to solve the 8513 problem, we have to now make this part of collective bargaining and binding arbitration? Couldn't we simply say that healthcare is something that can be part of collective bargaining and just sort of leave it open? Why do we need to define the terms so specifically?
Well, with all due respect.
Please, yeah.
The disputes started with Councilman Benoit.
That's what I, that's what I was getting at, right.
When he wrote a piece of legislation that said, healthcare shall not be a subject to collective bargaining.
Correct.
So we were off into the races, okay? And we spent five years investing in a large piece of litigation to have sustained by the Court of Special Appeals.
Mm-hmm.
In fact, there was a petition for cert, which was denied by the Court of Appeals after we won at the Court of Appeals, Court of Special Appeals level, to challenge that. And what we presented to the court, in the appellate court, is that almost universally, particularly in the private sector, but also so in the public sector, healthcare is considered a mandatory subject of bargaining under a normal, routine collective bargaining system. And that includes the facets of benefits, co-pays, plan design, and plan execution. The difference here, in part, is that when you're going out, like in the RFPs that we're talking about, you're self-insured. You're, you have such a large group that you're insuring, the number of lives that are involved, that you don't go out and buy insurance. The county goes out and buys an administrator that administrates the plan or program of benefits, which gives the county and the employees together greater choice in bargaining and defining how and in which ways you're going to control costs and control the access to benefits.
Understood, and I get all of that. I guess, in some ways, I'm just curious as to why this is the solution to the problem. If the problem was that Mr. Benoit's bill, not Mr. Schu or Mr. Leopold, but Mr. Benoit's bill, was the one that went in and said, this is not subject to collective bargaining, and now you've been vindicated in the Court of Special Appeals where the Court of Special Appeals has said, you're right, this, you cannot go in and cut this out and say, this is not subject to collective bargaining. Why does it come back and then everything under the sun, pretty much, is, is subject to it, when currently the only thing that is subject to collective bargaining for anyone is the employer subsidy? How do we get to that level?
I don't agree that the only thing currently subject is the employer subsidy.
Well, that's what I heard the administration say.
We have bargained over other facets of, of the availability of benefit. We have done it both formally and informally. Like I said, I remember having impasses prior to the passage of the charter provision back in 2002, that decided in the form of recommendation to the council, in its capacity of deciding impasses, whether or not different features of healthcare should or could be provided. The purpose of the bill, the way we've bargained it, designed it today, is to make a process available to both sides, so we know what path to follow in engaging in the process of defining health benefits.
Would the unions that you're representing be open to any fewer components of healthcare being included in this bill?
I would agree with counsel for the county and the representation to the county council that the bill does not define in detail which components of healthcare are to be included. It, it, it doesn't say that, let's say, healthcare benefits for particular types of disease, or particular types of process, or particular procedures, or particular providers are subject to bargaining or not. It says, health benefits or health benefit options are. It says that plans may be, but that's in a gross, general way. It's not the specific way that was addressed as we litigated with the courts.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Councilwoman Lacy, do you have a question for the?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two questions. First, in your opinion, if we were to pass this bill, and likely with amendments that we're going to be discussing, but at the general level, do you expect that passing this bill would avoid an Atkinson III?
I sincerely hope so, and I would say yes.
Okay, and then to my colleague, Councilman Volkey, I'm trying to understand your objection when you are asking about whether specific things are included in the health benefits or not. Are you objecting to the county covering vasectomies? I mean, reproductive health, what, what level of negotiation is needed here? That's really my question, and you also don't have to answer it at this time.
Thank you. Can I get back to you?
Let's continue with the public testimony, if we will. Mr. Waldorf's been waiting patiently. Thank you, sir.
That's kind of tough to follow there. Hi, I'm Dale Waldorf, the very proud president of the Anaronda County Detention Officers Union. I can't really, you know, speak as eloquently on this matter as Joel and Obie can, but, you know, long story short, we want the same thing you do. We want better bang for the buck, both for the county and the employee. For long and the short of it. Because if we can get a damn good product for a damn good price, why wouldn't we? And, you know, we don't, we're not asking for anything that is so outside of the norm. You know, we just want a fair deal. And at the same time, we want to attract employees to our county, and we want to keep a good level of healthcare. The healthcare that we got, I think nobody can argue that it's, they're darn good plans. And we want to keep those plans top-notch. And, you know, that's also a way to, one, attract people, and two, to retain those same people that we attract. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, no other movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill number 2419 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2419.
Bill number 2419, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel and Purchasing Employee and Retiree Health Benefits Program.
Okay, I don't see any further discussion. Before they do that, I just want to make one quick comment. You know, there, there was a lot of arguments up here, back and forth, but I think one of the things that was, that I mentioned earlier when we had a public hearing on this bill is, how do we want to treat our employees? That's what this simply comes down to. And I know I want to vote for this, because certainly there's been litigation for a while, and I want to look a police officer, firefighter, you know, county employee in the face and say, I did you right. Or tell them, no, you know, I don't think that you should be able to bargain. I understand here that you can go either way, but let me just tell you, being involved with healthcare negotiations in the past, if you do a annual plan, if you think $2.6 million is a lot, wait till you see that number. Because every individual unit will want to do their own thing, and the fact that the bargaining units came to the table, 12 of them, and said, hey, let's join this together, when you pool insurance, it saves money. And I also think, too, we worried about either the greed or the fear that, you know, that it's not going to go out. I mean, when you're at the bargaining table, there's a certain pot of money. You know, someone's not going to say, well, we're going to give you everything. There's a certain pot of money, they know that, and that's how it's bargained. And I think that understanding that process moving forward is, is critical. So I really support this bill. I think a lot of work has gone into what's occurred, and I just think, no offense to the attorneys in there, and we need to stop paying you. Let's get to the, get to the point here and fix, we have a solution in front of us, let's do that, and focus on the good work of the county, in my opinion. So we'll leave it at that. We do have some amendments, though. Madam Secretary, could you please read amendment number one?
Amendment number one, this amendment ensures that provisions regarding retiree health benefits in any union agreements entered into prior to the effective date of this ordinance will remain in effect.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, she'd like to discuss.
Sure. For the record, Pete Barron with the county executive with me at the table is Mr. Swain, Mr. Tyler from Office of Law, our new Personnel Officer, Ms. Dickerson, and Anne Bedowski from Personnel. Yes, amendment number, the administration requested this amendment. It protects existing agreements. We hope you will move favorably.
Okay, any questions on amendment number one? Councilwoman Hare.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure this essentially is like a grandfathering clause for anybody who was already, okay, thank you.
This amendment, Greg Swain, county attorney, this amendment was necessitated by a provision in one of the union agreements, in the FOP agreement, that has been in their memorandum of agreement, their actual collective bargaining agreement, since 1984. And basically what this provisions, and it's the only one in any union contract, but basically what it says is it protects the employee's right to the employer subsidy at the time they retired. So at the time, in 1984, it was put in to preserve the 80/20 subsidy, because that's what it was, up until Bill 8513 went through. So that agreement, or that. So that agreement, or that provision, is still in the FOP contract, and what it provides is, it doesn't, it provides that upon retiring, you're entitled to the subsidy at the time you retire that you were eligible for.
Okay, so it doesn't change, I mean, this doesn't change anything, it just protects the status quo, essentially, on that?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative, Amendment Number One is adopted.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two, this amendment removes excessive, no, excuse me, excessive, excess punctuation, correctly identifies employer as the party who subsidizes health insurance plans available to employees, and correctly identifies a reference to county code.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, administration?
We support this amendment.
And if I can add, two of the points that Madam Auditor brought up in her fiscal note are being addressed in this amendment.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion with the lights, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Two?
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative, Amendment Number Two is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three, this amendment protects retirees as currently provided under county code.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this amendment is being introduced by myself and Ms. Lacy. It pretty much clarifies what we currently do in terms of retirees under the county code. That's all I have to say. Ms. Lacy, did you want to add anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, only that, we recognize that the intent of the bill was to make no changes to the benefits existing for retirees, and our new legislative council pointed out, this particular provision created either an ambiguity or simply left an opening, where Atkinson III might come back, actually. So, that's what this amendment is intended to avoid.
Okay. Administration, and Councilwoman here.
Administration supports this amendment, nobody wants to see Atkinson III.
Okay. Councilwoman here.
I'm just trying to understand, this one with relation to Amendment Number One, does this essentially apply the provision that's in that one collective bargaining agreement to all 12?
Greg Swain, county attorney, this amendment, it works in, I guess, tandem with Amendment Number One.
Okay.
Amendment Number One is meant to protect that contractual right. This is meant to, well, when we did the bill, we deleted all of Section B, including a section that provided this for retirees. So the intent of the amendment is to provide that upon retiring, you're entitled to the subsidy at the time you retire, and that will not change.
Okay, and was there a fiscal impact to this, or I guess that's a difficult piece to pull together?
Well, this is the way the counties always applied the law.
Oh, okay, okay.
And was, in fact, in the code, I believe, before 8513, so should not be any fiscal impact.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, oop, Councilman Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry about that, late jump in. Mr. Swain, you said this was the way it was before 8513. Did 8513 change this?
I don't think 8513 affected this, I'm not certain of that, but I think this was in before 8513. I know as a matter of practice, this is the way the office of personnel has always applied this, and it's never been changed legislatively to change a retiree's subsidy once they've retired. So it's always been more or less locked in at that rate.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative, Amendment Number Three is adopted.
Okay, due to the amendments, Bill Number 2419, as amended, will be heard at the next meeting on May 20th, Monday, 7:00 p.m. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? The motion carries, the county council's now in adjournment till 1:00 p.m. tomorrow,